Okay, I'd like to welcome you to the Placer County Planning Commission meeting of August 24th. And so to kick off the meeting, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this point, we'll do a roll call on the Commissioners.
Good morning. Commissioner Curry.
Here.
Commissioner Haber.
Here.
Commissioner Rokucci.
Here.
Commissioner Nader.
Here.
Commissioner Sevison.
Here.
Commissioner Moss.
Here.
And Chairman Johnson.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll have EJ give us a Planning Director report.
Services Division. I just have a couple items to point out to you. The Board of Supervisors, they met last week, last Tuesday. The Jigger 20 subdivision appeal was before them. If you remember, one of the appellant's was the Saxtons. They were the neighbors of the property. At that meeting, I guess they had already come to an agreement with the developer on some drainage issues, some fencing issues, height requirements. And so they withdrew their name from the appeal at the hearing. There were still a few other neighbors that had concerns. After the Board considered those concerns, they ended up denying the appeal, and then they approved the project as your commission recommended. Also, at that Board hearing, they approved a Housing Program Work Plan. That's part of the implementation of our 2013 Housing Element, basically intended to identify ways to accelerate development of affordable and workforce housing. We're going to have probably Shawna Purvines on our staff, and possibly Jennifer Merchant come to a future Planning Commission meeting, just to give you an informational item update on what transpired at that meeting and what's going to be going on in the next several months. So you can look forward to that. Upcoming Planning Commission meetings, the next meeting is September 14th. We have a couple items on that agenda that is going to be in Auburn. Our next Tahoe meeting, and I think you could finally quote me on this, is going to be October 26th. That's where we have the Gary Davis Appeal, and then also the Alpine Sierra Subdivision Draft EIR Hearing. There may be another item on that agenda as well. Between now and October 26th, there's another couple meetings. I'm not sure if we're going to hold both of those, so when we meet next on the 14th, I'll let you know which ones are going to be scheduled, depending on which projects are ready to come forward before you. So the fun part of my job now is I get to introduce you to some new staff members. And as I'm looking in the audience, I see several new staff folks. And so what I'm going to do, and they're probably not going to like this, but I'm going to call their names and have all of them stand up and stay standing until I get done, and then they can be seated. So I want to start with Lee Chavez. I know, I saw Lee stand up. Patrick Dobbs. Andrea DeShiel. Michelle Lewis. Am I missing anybody? Who am I missing? No, I think that's it. I'm going to have Ted stand up, too, because I have something to say about him, too. So anyway, so these are new members of, you know, Team Placer is what we call it. First of all, Lee Chavez, she's our new Environmental Coordinator. As you know, planning has kind of assumed those duties over the last eight or nine years. That position is now filled as an agency position. She comes from Contra Costa County with many years of experience. She was their Environmental Coordinator with their Public Works Department. She has some incredible sequin knowledge, and I think she's going to be a real asset to our team. Patrick Dobbs, he was a planner for both the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency and Nevada County. Worked on a number of high-profile projects. We're happy to have him here at the county. He's going to focus right now on current planning in our division, so we look forward to that. Andrea DeShiel, in the back, is our new Zoning Administrator Clerk. She's been with us for a little while now and has picked up very quick. You know, those are some tough, those admin support positions are some of the toughest positions to fill, and she has been a quick study and is doing really well. The, let's see, Michelle Lewis, who I haven't formally met, so nice to meet you. She's our newest Assistant Engineer, and she has experience in the private sector. At one point, she worked for DWR. I know she was a teacher, so a good cross-section of backgrounds. So we look forward to having her. She'll be doing a lot of plan checking with our Engineering and Surveying Division. So that's exciting. And then who else do I have? And I had Ted. So Ted, he was our, he's done a number of positions with the county, previously our Code Enforcement Supervisor. He is now with the Parks Division as a Planner over in Parks. So he'll be working on a lot of the, you know, projects that come before you. So with that, I will let, did I miss anybody? I think I got you.
Hey, you missed somebody that's moving on to the CEO's office.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll sit everybody down, and then I'll have Shawna Pratt stand up. So Shawna Pratt, which was previously Shawna Hosey, up until a couple weeks ago, she recently got married. So she's accepted a position as Executive Assistant with the County Executive Office. So she'll be working directly for David Bosch. Her last day is today. She has been an integral part of our planning, Planning's Admin Support Team, along with Sue. And, you know, for the past year, I mean, the work ethic and dedication and what she's done here has been incredible. So we're really going to miss her. We're hoping she comes back someday. She won't be far, so we can still bug her. So anyway, I just want to thank you for all the work you've done. We appreciate it, and good luck down at the Executive's Office. Thank you.
EJ, great on all the new additions. Do you still have positions you need to fill in the planning side?
So we're getting close. I know for planning, we have a new Assistant Planner, starting on Monday. Bennett Smith-Hart, he's coming from Georgia of all places.
Wow.
A really, really bright kid who's come, I guess I can say that because of my age. But, but, anyway, so we're looking forward to getting him on board. Other than that, we have just one Planner position to fill, and if we do that, it'll probably be sometime this fall. I know Engineering, they're working on, you know, obviously, we have a lot of subdivision projects that are going into the improvement plan process, so there's a real need for plan checkers right now, and I think they're looking for a couple positions over there. So I think that's where the focus is right now.
EJ, how many are in your department, the planning?
Planning, I think we're at 24 right now.
That includes his new?
That includes our admin staff.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, at the peak, you know, back in 2004, '05, you know, we were probably close to 50 people.
Wow.
I think we're more busy now than we were at that time, and we're working with half the, you know, about half the staff. But, I mean, we have an incredible, incredibly talented staff, and I'm pretty amazed by the, you know, the work they're producing.
Are you outsourcing some?
For planning right now, I don't believe so. We were for a short time, but I don't believe we have anything out right now. Yeah. So.
Good luck.
I'm happy.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Let's see, at this time, I'd open it up for public comment. This would involve anything that's not on our current agenda. Come forward.
My name's Kurt Miller, and I have property in Penrund, and also I live in Sun City, Roseville, and I'm phasing out of the farming business, and I find it's very difficult to phase out of the farming business, because farming in my part of the country doesn't benefit the new owners. If anything, they'll come and tear out the trees and stuff. And I have a lot of neighbors that are, I'm in the MAC, Penrund MAC down there. I'm not in it, but I attend to several meetings, and they're not the most positive people to work with sometimes. So my recommendation is when we have high-density growth in an agricultural area, we don't try to keep it agricultural by not changing the zoning and stuff. I wish there was a group within the department that said, hey, as we increase the utilities within the area, there's a consideration of changing the zoning based on what the Placer County Government really wants. I've probably made a nuisance of myself trying to figure out what I want. My children don't want anything to do with the ranch, just like other ranch second generations and stuff. So it'd be nice to be able to come to the Planning Department and say, I'm ready to move on, and what's the best arrangements for the county to take a look at my total property. I've met with sort of a quasi-bunch of people, and I would like some help in deciding what to do with my property that benefits the neighbors. I have a lot of neighbors that come in and say, see Kurt, can we buy an acre from you? No, it's 2.3 acres, and I really don't have them, you know, I'm one of these guys that's land-rich and cash-poor. Placer County Agricultural Property has done very well for my family and stuff. I've had it since '70, I think '79. But what we'd like to do, as far as affordable homes and this type of thing, if I keep the property, I have to generate more revenue for it. We've been talking to Farm Link, talking to several other nonprofit organizations, and I really need a facilitator within the county that's job is to take a look at all these farms that are in close proximity of the development and say, is it realistic to have the farm property owner come to the county and spend X number of dollars to get a no or yes vote? And it's just my own feeling as far as, you know, affordable homes and everything. I, you know, I have on my property, I have 20 acres, two 10-acre parcels. Over the time, I've got it into the sewer district, except for one 10-acre. We perked and maddled the other four. But in order for my children to buy and live on our property before I pass away, I probably have to spend $300,000 or $400,000 to put in the necessary utilities to satisfy the county specifications. We just had a neighbor sell his farm house, and it cost him over $100,000 just to get access to that house, because they know he wants to develop the rest of the property. So there's a lot of opportunities before I sell my property to make sure that it's not sold off in 2.3-acre parcels. For example, the nice peach orchard up behind me has changed hands three times, and it's nothing but a dried-up peach orchard now. We have other places that have come in, and in fact, one of my parcels, when I sold it, the guy just wanted the barn to store his financial information. He was a developer. It has since sold, and the guy from Winchester Development came in and bought it, and he's totally redone the barn for his RVs, and he wants to build a nice home. It's nothing against him, but this is the way 2.3-acre parcels are going in Penrund. They're not going to stay in agricultural. In fact, if I sell mine at 2.3 acres, I have better off to remove my trees because of the recapture cost on selling the trees. So I think there's a lot of opportunities in Placer County. I benefited by them, but I really need somebody within Placer County that are really honest about taking a look at all this happening to the farm. We've got, you know, I'm across from the school. We've got pesticide problems. We've got two houses for 5,000 square feet now. We basically staged 300 small animals, goats and sheep, off of our property for shipping and everything. So it is a very active agricultural area, but it's not good to pass on to the next generation. So I appreciate your time and consideration, and I'd like to be involved in any future agricultural zoning changes within the Western Placer County. Thank you for your time.
Okay, well, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, with that, we'll go ahead to the consent agenda. And so is there any pleasure from the Commission or the public?
Chairman, if I could, I'd like to ask that you take these items separately, maybe Item A and then Item B. When we get to Item B, there's one typo I want to correct.
Not hearing anything from the public, then we'll go forward with the consent agenda as discussed there. And so Commissioners, I would look, oh.
I'll move approval of the Item A, which is approved action agenda for the August 10th meeting.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
I have a first from Mr. Rokucci and a second from Mr. Nader. Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Haber?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Not hearing very good.
Your answer is hilarious.
Sevison and Johnson, they sound the same.
Thank you.
So for Item B on page five, finding number two, the finding refers to a different project, Premier Granite Bay Town Homes, and the correction would be to change that to residences at Granite Bay Golf Club.
Commissioners?
We're changing that Premier Granite Bay Town Homes to the project that we're considering today.
Did I confuse everybody?
I'm not really clear on what you said.
So in the, this is a request for extension of time, but when you get to the findings, one of the findings refers to a different project, and so we just need to make the correction to the correct project.
So that means?
Number two, where it says Premier Granite Bay.
So this is a, we're dealing with residents at Granite Bay Golf Club Phase Two today, and under Item Two on the extension of time, refers to this as Premier Granite Bay Town Homes, which is in error?
Yes, and it should be corrected to the residences at Granite Bay. Correct.
We reflect that in the motion that is the Granite Bay Golf Club Phase Two.
Yep, that's correct.
I've got it.
Okay, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the two-year extension of time request for residents at Granite Bay Golf Club Phase Two, in reliance on the previously adopted mitigative negative declaration and condition of approval, subject to the following findings in the report and the corrected name of the project in Item Number Two.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
That was a first by Mr. Moss and a second by Mr. Sevison. So Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Haber?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, our next, our timed item is the zoning text for the Water Efficiency Landscape Implementation Compliance.
We're bringing forward the water.
This is Emily?
Yes, I'm Emily Sutter.
Okay, thank you.
We're bringing forward the Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance zoning text amendment This is the most recent of several increasingly strict state-mandated water restrictions. In 1990, the Water Conservation and Landscaping Act was enacted. In 2006, AB 1881 established the Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, or the Model Welo is what we're calling it. In 2015, during the drought, Governor Brown directed stricter updates to the Welo that went into effect by default already on December 1st in 2015. So now we are moving forward to adopt the Welo into our codes. The purpose of this ordinance is to reduce the amount of water used for landscape irrigation. To do this, Welo limits water use by promoting water-efficient landscapes, preventing water waste, and increasing efficient irrigation, limiting turf, and incentivizing the use of gray water and recycled water. Welo applies to residential, commercial, industrial, and institutional and public agency projects with certain size thresholds. For new projects, it applies to projects with a landscape area equal to or greater than 500 square feet. For remodeled or rehabilitated projects, it applies to landscapes greater than 2,500 square feet. It does not apply to ecological restoration projects that don't require permanent irrigation or registered historic sites. It also does not apply to the Tahoe Basin, because the Tahoe Basin Area Plan has its own water restrictions there. The trigger for Welo is that a project must require a building permit, a plan check, or a design review, and it must include landscaping in the project. When no landscaping is included and landscaping is not otherwise required in the project, Welo does not apply. We see this as being most effective at targeting the larger subdivisions and commercial and Depending on the size of the project, Welo has varying requirements. It sets turf limits, so no turf for commercial or industrial projects, turf limits for residential projects. It requires certain depths of composting and mulching to retain water, and it requires that most plants use little or no summer water, and it does that through water budget calculations. It also requires hydrozones, which is planting your high-water-use plants in one area, your medium-water-use plants in another area, and your low-water-use plants in another area, in order to not, in order to avoid overwatering or underwatering your plants. It also requires automatic irrigation with moisture and rain sensor data. There's a lot of words on this page, but really the gist is that the left side is the prescriptive compliance option, and there are less requirements there. And that is the path for smaller projects under 5,000 square feet. And it allows the applicants to pretty much self-certify and say that they meet the requirements. The right side has more requirements, and that's for the larger projects over 5,000 square feet. These are going to be your commercial and subdivision projects, where they're already hiring landscape architects. And we've actually increased this threshold, this size threshold from the model ordinance. It was 2,500 square feet, so we believe that by increasing it to just under 5,000 square feet, for the easier option, makes it more palatable and encourages more smaller project applicants to comply, therefore increasing overall compliance.
Can I ask a question on this?
Sure.
On the, I guess the left side?
Mm-hmm.
Let's say somebody's got 2,600 feet of lawn.
Mm-hmm.
And it's turned to weeds and they want to replace it, and so they have a couple options. They can replace it with, you know, bark and compost and landscape material, or they may want to replace the lawn that's basically gone. I guess first question is, would that require a permit either way?
So it only, I'll go back, that would only apply if the project otherwise needed a building permit, a plan check, or a design review.
If somebody owns a house?
If they just wanted to replace the landscaping, like a homeowner, they don't, Welo does not apply to them.
Okay.
Unless they needed a building permit, a plan check, or a design review. So at this point, replacing your lawn does not require a permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I'm sorry, that triggered a question for me, too.
Uh, yeah.
So if somebody comes and takes a building permit out for nothing landscape-related, are they still going to be forced to bring their project up to these requirements?
Only if landscaping is included in their project by choice, or if it's required in their project by something in our code.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Welo, the Welo ordinance considers certain areas to be special landscape areas, which allows them extra water use in the water budget calculations. These include edible gardens, like your vegetable gardens, areas irrigated with recycled water, or with water features using recycled water, active play, such as parks, sports fields, and golf courses, and we've added low-impact development to this list as well. It also encourages and incentivizes the use of gray water and rainwater, because if you're using, if a project is using gray water or rainwater for landscapes under 5,000 square feet, those projects only need to meet the irrigation requirements in that prescriptive compliance, easier option. So that is intended to incentivize applicants to use gray water. The Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance will live in Chapter 15. Chapter 17, the zoning ordinance, will require compliance with Chapter 15. And as part of this process, we are also updating the landscape design guidelines to provide more detail and guidance to the public. Staff has been presenting the Welo all summer long to the MACs. We've attended every MAC except West Placer, which was moved to September. Overall, some MAC members had questions about the Welo requirements, but we received no comments. As outlined in the staff report, we ask that you forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to categorically exempt and adopt the proposed code amendments.
Anybody have any questions? I have one more.
Sure.
Okay, I was looking through, see on page nine, and you may not have this here, 91C says existing landscapes limited to sections F and L. And so I did find F, but I didn't find L. And that would be on page 20. And maybe I wasn't looking good enough, but.
Well, there is a lot of text in there. I would have to go back and check on that.
Okay. Well, it could be just a little typo there or something like that.
It could be, yeah.
I thought I'd bring it up, because when you're looking, it says, look an L, and you can't find it, then.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question, don't know if it's one you could answer, Council needs to, but not being a fan of piling on more regulations, I just got to ask, what happens if we don't?
Well, as Emily mentioned, and is in the staff report, by default, the state subjected us to the proposed ordinance by the state. By adopting these regulations and being able to design them to meet the needs of the county, we're actually in better shape than simply allowing the state ordinance, which we would have then to comply with. So this isn't a case of being able to opt out, it's a case of being able to tailor it or be stuck with the state regs.
Can we tailor it back to the way it was?
No.
Sorry, Jeff.
Nice try. Had to try.
Okay, any other?
In response to your question, Commissioner Johnson, this appears to be a typo, this F and L, and we will correct that.
Okay.
To refer to the correct sections when it goes to the Board. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Okay, any more questions?
Yeah, I have one. The language was very specific about the source of water in regards to gray water, you know, treated water, untreated water. I'm assuming that untreated water would include ditch water, for example, if you were landscaping with ditch water.
So technically, Welo does apply to ditch water as well.
It would.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I just want to be clear, County Council. So the state has adopted this as law, and with, and if, as to Jeff's question, if we do not adopt our own local application of the state law, whatever, the state law requirements will be imposed on Placer County, whether anyone likes it or not, correct?
Yes, and in fact, those regulations, that proposed ordinance was imposed on Placer County effective 2015.
2015.
2015.
Okay.
So that's what we've been operating under. This is more of, we've seen this as a trend with the state, where when they adopt legislation, they include within the legislation. legislation, they include within the legislation, how should I word this, less wiggle room for local jurisdictions. In other words, if you don't do something to adopt it into your ordinance in a way that complies with the state law but tailors it to your particular conditions, then what the state has imposed stands, and we are subject to those regulations. And again, have been since 2015, we're now bringing up, you know, ours up to code and up to local standards.
So, so the state, within its legislation, specifically allows for some wiggle room, as you might say, or allowing the local communities to tailor it to their needs?
Right.
As long as it's within the state guidelines?
It has to meet the intent of the state, state regulations, and I probably should, should have chosen a different word than wiggle room, because in fact, there is very little wiggle room. But what the state allows is for the local jurisdiction to prove up that the various revisions meet the intent of the state law while addressing our local conditions. And I'll ask Emily to correct me if I've misstated anything with that.
That's correct, and I actually spoke with the Department of Water Resources about revisions and tweaks that we could make to their model ordinance, and they explained it, that if we are encouraging more people to comply with it than not complying, then we're increasing overall compliance, and that meets the intent of the state model ordinance.
And the state has actually promulgated specific regulations already, correct?
Yes, the state, the state adopted a proposed model ordinance that basically set forth the regulations. And if a local jurisdiction didn't either adopt that or adopt something that was, met the intent of the state law, then that proposed ordinance, those regulations, are imposed and on the jurisdiction, they're required to comply with it. That was in 2015.
Thank you.
I'm guessing that the state's requirements are much more onerous than what we're doing.
There have been certain points that I have pointed out that where we are loosening the requirements, so to speak, a little bit, in order to make them more palatable and easier to implement.
The self-certification that you mentioned.
Mm-hmm. By increasing the size threshold for that, we're allowing more people to go with the self-certification option.
Right.
So that's a perfect example. By including, just a couple of other ones. By allowing low-impact development to be considered a special landscape area, that's another example of where we've included that, so that that better fits our already existing ordinances and codes.
You may have spoken to it, but just so I am clear, what's the retroactive-ivity of this? What about existing, this is all talk towards permits and new expansions or changes, what about existing?
This will apply once, once adopted. If adopted by the board, it will take effect 30 days later, and then that becomes our ordinance. Up till then, my assumption is that it's based on the state law requirements.
Correct. And this would not apply to any projects that have already been approved. This is not retroactive, this is not putting more requirements on them at this point unless they need to come forward again with a plan check, a design review, or a building permit. So it's really moving forward with any projects that meet those requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is that it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll open it up to the public. And so anybody in the public who would like to make a comment, you're welcome to step forward at this time. Oh, surprise.
Mike Arabedian, speaking for Chair Club Placer Group. I just have a question. Looking at some of the slides and so forth, it appears that the layout is based on sealing the surface. Is that, is that correct?
But what do you mean by sealing the surface?
Well, there are wide areas of bark and so forth. The question is, is that a sealed surface under the bark, you know, plastic liner or something like that? Is that part of this ordinance?
Yeah, go ahead.
The ordinance does not require linings under bark or mulch. It does require certain depths of compost and mulch that need to be made.
So I guess the more direct question might be, does this ordinance have anything to do with infiltration by rainfall in these areas that are landscaped? Which is a concern. We, I would assume we would not want to be blocking infiltration.
I, it does not speak to that, but that would be better addressed, I think, in our low-impact development. And we have included the low-impact development areas as part of the special landscape areas for this ordinance.
It seems to me that logic would say that, you know, if somebody wanted to convert their property to the bark and native plants, that it's unlikely that somebody would spend the money to line it with concrete underneath there. And now, most people are putting down this material that, that lets the water go through but doesn't, doesn't, well, prevents roots from getting established and getting down to where the water is, so. From a logic standpoint, I would suspect that's probably why they didn't address the solid surface underneath.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I think it's kind of confusing, because perhaps down here, what you say is the case. I'm almost certain that if you come up to Lake Tahoe, we don't want plastic, and we don't want concrete under the chips. We want it to percolate. We don't want runoff, we want it percolating into the soil. So I'm not sure how this fits. Are you going to agree with me?
There's...
And I agree with that. I guess my question is, does this ordinance deal with that or not? Or are owners free to line it if they want? That's kind of what I'm wondering.
There's a very detailed section under Section 1575-020, which are the seminal requirements. Roman numeral four, Soil Preparation Mulch and Amendments, that goes into quite a bit of detail.
What page is that?
That would be page 15 of the staff, the staff packet. But it gives a very detailed list of items that whoever's checking this would be looking at in terms of depth of mulch, type of mulch, et cetera, et cetera. So I think the intent, and I'll let Emily tell me if I'm speaking incorrectly, the intent is to provide enough guidelines so that you can have a meaningful discussion as to what the landscape would look like, how the mulch should operate, but not dictate, for example, in Tahoe, you wouldn't want necessarily a plastic layer. Other places, people may opt for that. It gives enough latitude to look at it in a per-application basis.
Yeah, and I think that it's going to be difficult to deal with the separation, because there's going to be, as was suggested, there's going to be a lot of people want to put something down to protect the roots from growing and weeds and things you don't want to grow. But we don't do that at the lake, and we're not allowed to do it, or you get charged for coverage, and you don't want that. So I think it would be helpful to maybe have a footnote or something that explains that there's different regions within the county that may be treated differently. Thank you.
Thank you, that sounds good. I noticed...
Well, just a minute here. In this area down here, it wouldn't be desirable to have an impermeable surface underneath the bark, unless maybe it existed before.
Correct. The intent of the ordinance, and I don't, I don't, nothing is coming to mind right now about linings in it, but we can check on that. But the intent of the ordinance is to use water efficiently, so with that, if there were plastic linings that then encouraged water runoff, that would not, that would not be, go along with the intent of the ordinance. And I will also...
And it does address water runoff pretty, pretty extensively.
It does. A lot of the requirements are intended to capture the water that is placed on the plants and in the landscapes in order to really make it water-efficient landscaping.
Okay.
And I will also say that, just a reminder, this does not apply to the Tahoe Basin, because the Tahoe Basin Area Plan has its own set of requirements there.
Good answer.
So basically, you know, somebody would have to prove that the water hitting an impervious surface is not going to cause a runoff problem, which undoubtedly it would. If it doesn't soak into the ground, it's going to cause a runoff problem.
Well, thank you. I noticed that it does deal with evapotranspiration to a fair extent, and of course, the soil surface also evapor, water evaporates from that. So that answers my question, helps to understand what this does and doesn't do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public who wants to make a comment? Okay, step on forward.
Hi, my name's Carol Rubin. I'm a rural Newcastle resident. The issue that, the only issue that I see in here is this issue of ministerial approval, which I understand decreases the workload for all of you folks, and for most cases, is not a problem. The trouble with ministerial approvals is that it doesn't give neighboring property owners any chance for any kind of notification or appeal if one of these secondary units is going to be put in and will impact their property. So for instance, if there's going to be additional runoff, and it would run off into their property, or if the sightlines of the new unit would look directly into your backyard, and I'm wondering if it would...
Let me, let me, let me kind of catch you at this point. I think we're talking, we're not talking about the secondary unit yet. We're going to get on to that pretty soon. Yeah, this is dealing with water.
Excuse me.
Yeah. Last gave you. So we'll give you another chance.
Coming in late, right?
Okay. Okay, any more comments from the public? Okay, at this time, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission, and whatever your pleasure, question, more questions, or a motion, or whatever.
Take a shot at it. I would move that we make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on finding the proposed code amendments to be categorically exempt under SEQA guidelines, Section 15307, supported by the findings contained within the staff report, and to adopt an ordinance to amend...
It's okay to do it all at once.
Okay. To amend Placer County Code, Chapter 15, to add Article 15.75, amend Chapter 17, Section 17.54.030, related to landscaping and fencing, and to adopt the updated landscaping design guidelines.
Okay, there's one minor correction.
And, yes, with the correction of L, the elimination of L, correct?
Okay, any further discussion? Not hearing anything, we'll go for a roll call.
I have a first with Mr. Nader and a second with Mr. Okuchi. Mr. O'Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Haber?
Yes.
Mr. Okuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Reluctant yes.
Mr. Moss?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries with...
Good boy.
With one no and a reluctant yes, huh? Okay. All right, so, well, this is going to go to the Board of Supervisors, so we'll, we can, at this point, we can move on to the discussion of secondary dwellings.
Good morning. I'm Shawna Purvines with the Planning Services Division, Long Range Planning Unit, and I'm here to talk about the proposed amendments for the secondary dwellings. I'm going to speak to them in the four specific categories that are being recommended for revisions, and that's to the types and size of units, parking requirements, the approval process and timelines, and the utility requirements. So some of you may remember last year, the county did bring forward some amendments to the secondary dwelling ordinance. That was as a result of an implementation program for the general plan. Just about the time that got all buttoned up and completed, the state changed the laws. So the purpose of the state change in the law was to further streamline the process for owners to add secondary dwellings to their property. Now, the state actually does change this law fairly regularly. They've been tweaking it on and off about every four or five years for probably the better part of the last 15 years, 20 years. This time was a little different. This was the first time they put in a provision to that law that said, at any, if, if any portion of a local jurisdiction's ordinance is inconsistent with the state law, the entire local ordinance is found null and void. So January 1st, their new changes went into effect, and as with many jurisdictions, we did find one side, we did find sections of our ordinance inconsistent with the state law. So since January 1st, our ordinance has been null and void. Now jurisdictions had two choices. They could just default to the state and continue using those as the base for approvals on secondary dwellings, or they could amend or approve or renew their ordinance, and that is what staff is proposing here today. So as with any amendments to the zoning ordinance, we're always checking to ensure that it is consistent with our general plan. And just as the amendments last year, there are provisions in our general plan that support the development of secondary dwelling units and streamlining the process for their approval. So I'm going to go into the actual changes that were being made. So secondary dwellings can be either attached, detached, or located within an existing dwelling or accessory unit. The increased floor area of an attached unit shall not exceed 50% of the existing liviere. This was one of the changes. It used to be 30%, so the state did amend this to be 50%. And it did allow for up to a maximum of 1,200 square feet, which wasn't changed. That was the previous law as well, be it attached or detached or within the existing structure. Most of the state's changes to this ordinance were related to the units located within an existing structure, be it the primary unit or any other permitted structure, like a garage or something else onsite. So secondary dwelling units that are contained within existing space, this means spaces that are permanent or legal spaces, spaces of residence or accessory structures have in, they have to have independent exterior access and side and rear yard setbacks sufficient for fire safety. These units have to be allowed without any restrictions. That is the state, state law. So the parking requirements, that, this didn't change as far as the number so much, it's one space per unit or bedroom required. However, what they did add in is when parking is not required as part of a secondary dwelling. So no parking is required if the new unit is within proximity to a public transit stop, which is defined as a half mile. The unit is located within an existing space. So again, if you're bringing it inside of an existing home or existing structure, no new parking space is required. Located within a historic district, where there's on-street parking permits required but none are available, or when it's, the new unit's within proximity to a shared car service. So this would be something like the Zip Car Program. It's not your Uber or your Lyft. It's where you can actually share cars between a service that's provided locally. So existing covered garages, if that is demolished to accommodate the second dwelling unit, then where there's a parking space required, you can, you can accommodate that in any way, as long as you're able to add that. Approval processes and timelines. Applications for new secondary dwelling units are now required to be approved within 120 days and by a ministerial permit. That was the requirement of the state law. Utility requirements. A secondary dwelling unit can no longer be considered a new residential use for the purpose of calculating utility charges, and cities and counties cannot require new or separate utilities and associated connection fees or charges for units that are contained, again, entirely within the structure. However, the county can still enforce all other applicable building codes, so your height limits, your setbacks, your lot coverages, those still apply.
Before we go on...
Uh-huh.
...a question on this...
On that slide there. This business about the water and sewer, now, is that, that, well, first little bullet below, utility requirements, does that mean, is that one there is, this second, second dwelling unit has to be within the existing structure, or can, if it's on a, if it's a separate building, they're saying that you, they're not going to have water and sewer charges?
Correct. They can't be used in calculating those utility charges.
It applies to either inside or outside of the existing structure.
They, they can still charge the fee if it's a detached, but as part... but as part of setting up their utility charge fees, they cannot include, they can't assume everybody's going to have a secondary dwelling in it as part of the-
So that means you wouldn't need to have a separate meter?
You could not. I know right now the public utility providers are currently reviewing these laws to determine what they're going to require as part of this.
But as far as the state is concerned-
It's, it cannot be considered a new use for the purpose of calculating those fees.
Okay.
But that second one says only if it's associated connection fees or charges for units that are contained entirely within the existing structures. My question is if you built a separate structure on the property-
Fees could still be levied on that.
You could do what?
Fees could still be levied if it's a detached structure.
If it, okay, that makes sense.
Right.
If it's an existing structure, the area hasn't increased and so I guess the service, but if you put a separate building on there, then those two would apply.
Correct.
Well, even probably the, the, send there you would have-
Even the school, even the school one would apply probably. Okay.
I know that PCWA charges for a second dwelling the same amount that they charge for the initial hookup.
But if it's in a separate, if it's a separate building?
They charge, let's say sixteen thousand dollars for a hookup, then they, if you put in a second dwelling, they charge you another sixteen.
And I know they are currently looking at these two changes in laws and those vary, those, those rules may be changing as well. So. Keep going on.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
As with the weelo.
Resolve that. I think what you said is the agencies themselves-
Have to make that determination.
Proclaiming their regulations on this issue. But I think what that particular one said is if it's not a separate building, then-
No fees, right.
But otherwise, it's up to those agencies to make their regulations.
Correct.
Okay.
So as with the weelo, we went together and met with the MACs between July sixth and August twenty-first. And we met with each of the MACs, with the exception of Wes Placer. Their agenda got a little full, and so we are now going to be out on the, on the September agenda. We provided them with the similar information we provided you and with a fact sheet. For the most part, the, the comments or the questions were just in and around the development of a second unit. We really didn't have any direct comments on the changes to the ordinance, with the exception of a couple. One was the owner occupancy requirements. That is a requirement that was currently in the county's ordinance up until December thirty-first, that at least one unit must remain available for the owner of the property. Really what it means is you can't rent out both parts, both units at the same time. As part of the recommendation and the amendments we're making to you here today, that's not changing. That was not a requirement for a change based on the state law rules. So we were trying to stick to just those we felt needed to be amended to be consistent with state law. However, I know you have received a letter and there has been a request that the commission consider, or discuss and consider removing that requirement as part of the secondary dwelling ordinance. In addition, we did hear just some general concerns about, and I think we'll, we'll hear them as we started to hear them today, just the concern about the, the development of secondary dwelling units being a ministerial. But that is something the board actually, you and the board reviewed last year and approved that these would be a ministerial permit, and now it's just a requirement of state law. The other thing we, we heard a lot about was just questions to the cost of developing second units. And so we had the information, so I figured I'd show that with you today as well. So we did a, just a sampling of the permits. We looked at an eight hundred square foot unit, a thousand square foot unit, and a twelve hundred square foot unit, and just did an average, an estimated average of what those permit fees would be. And so you can see there, the breakout of the fees, they run roughly about eighteen thousand dollars. They range from about seventeen to about, just shy of two thousand. And the other question we got was about property taxes. So this one was a little bit harder, just there's so many variables that go in to determine what your property tax is going to be. So we took a very simple case. Again, we looked at the eight hundred, the twelve hundred, a thousand and twelve hundred square foot. And we took a simple structure, not a complicated structure. And we came in with about an average of a hundred and fifty-nine dollars per year would be the, the increase in your property tax for adding a secondary dwelling to your property. So with that, staff is recommending that you find that the proposed tax amendments are exempt under SEQA and adopt the proposed amendments to the code.
Excuse me, I'd like to circle back if I might to the owner occupied issue. So when you went around to the MACs, if you can educate me, the pros and cons of that, because I understand both ends here, but I'd like to hear more about it.
So the owner occupied is a pretty common regulation in, in a lot of second units that we see ordinances in other jurisdictions. And I think it is just that the interest and or concern about absentee property owners and, you know, not maintenance or latent demand on some of the maintenance for the property. Also just having an area with its primary homeownership going to more of a rental kind of area. Those are the concerns that are cited generally and why that ordinance is in place or why that section of the ordinance is in place. Some of the reasons that people wanted to, you know, support maybe allowing more flexibility and allowing for both units to be rented was raised that, you know, the, the purpose of the secondary dwelling or what it's seen at the state is it's an affordable housing mechanism. It's a way to, to help meet affordable housing needs at the state level. And by allowing these to be both rented, you had a better chance of increasing the affordable housing inventory or supply. Some of the other ones that we heard were just examples of property owners who maybe, you know, had long-term job, you know, stays somewhere else, you know, that required, they had the opportunity to lease out both properties, but under the ordinance wouldn't be able to do that, just increasing their cost of their, their, their cost of living by having to keep that one, one unit open. So there were definitely good points on, on both sides. But again, this was something that was already in the county code, so it wasn't being recommended for revision at this time.
Yeah, thank you.
So they, let's say that's a secondary home up in the Tahoe area and they have another dwelling. If, if they don't rent out the, say, the main house, then they're in compliance?
Correct. As long as one of the units is remained available for the property owner. Doesn't necessarily mean they have to live there full-time or permanently, but at least one, yeah.
What if they're renting it out on Airbnb?
So that's, so the current, the current or, or the, the county's ordinance, both the one that's being proposed and the one that the county had up through December thirty-first, doesn't allow the second unit to be rented for less than thirty days. However, there is, there's not a limitation on the, the primary to be rented for less than thirty days.
Okay.
Commissioner Nader, we should clarify, the, this ordinance does not apply to the Tahoe Basin. The area plan, which the, the board adopted along with the implementing regulations, would regulate the Tahoe Basin. So I just want to make sure that-
So it does, it still does apply to the, to eastern area, just not the Tahoe Basin portion of it. It also doesn't apply to areas such as CCNRs that don't allow for secondary dwelling units to apply. It's only in the unincorporated area outside of those two.
So if I understand, based on what you said, if someone that say had a principal dwelling and a secondary unit, if the principal dwelling was rented on a regular basis by, you know, Airbnb, et cetera, and the other was a rental dwelling, that would be okay? Correct?
No, I think that the requirement is, is that at least one of the units is required to be made available at all times for a property owner. So if you're renting out for an Airbnb at any point in time, and the other unit is rented out, that would, that would be two units rented, and that would not be consistent with the policy.
Okay.
I think, just for clarification, at some point, TRPA is going to step in and get involved in this. They've been reluctant to do it. There's been a tremendous amount of discussion at governing board meetings with the city of South Lake Tahoe and Eldorado County, and of course, the Nevada side. And everybody's kind of waiting to hear the other shoe drop and figure out how we're going to deal with it because it, it's, it's become a real problem in some areas. We've had horror stories about your next-door neighbor Greyhound bus pulling up and dozens of people getting out and spending the weekend and the garbage and the junk. So there's going to have to be some, some discussion about it further, particularly in the Tahoe Basin, because we do have, the temptation is there to, for Airbnb and others to move in and dominate a whole community in some cases. And so we're going to have to find a tool to work with to, and hopefully, out of the various jurisdictions, including Placer County, some tool may hopefully evolve that will help us deal with that because it's going to have to be probably separated from Tahoe to the rest of the county because it might be obviously different down here. You don't have the pressure that you have up there for weekend rentals and so forth.
Right. And in fact, staff's been proactive on this, this point. Is already in discussions with TRPA, including their council, as to how to address the various issues of secondary dwellings in the Tahoe Basin. You may or may not remember that we, our area plan is unfortunately in the midst of litigation at this point in time. So we're waiting for that to come to a conclusion. But in the meantime, we are working actively with TRPA's staff on how to handle any permits that may come forward during that interim period. And we're working on a strategy. TRPA is not subject to state law, so TRPA has its own regulations, will maintain its own regulations. And what we're doing now, and we have our MOU now in place, not approved yet, I believe, by the governing board, but going forward as to the delegation of permitting authority. And what we're doing is we're working within the context of that in the interim of how we deal with this, and then working with TRPA's staff on those particular issues on how we go forward. So it's definitely on our radar.
Well, we do have a lot of problems with snow removal and things of that nature and that are different than the rest of the areas. And so it's, it's going to take a little extra massaging to find a way through the morass at this point. Thank you.
Could you clarify something for me of something you said, because I'm not sure I'm quite getting it. But obviously, we're adjusting our regulations to meet state requirements so that we have, you know, a qualified program as far as the state's concerned. But if I just heard you, we're exempting part of an area, or that, is it the Tahoe Basin that we're exempting from this? But they still have to comply with the state. Are they already in compliance with the new state requirements?
So the, the rules related to secondary dwelling units in the Tahoe Basin are spelled out in the Tahoe Basin Area Plan. And I think as council was, was explaining is we're working with TRPA to help implement those consistent with state law and, and, and the Tahoe Basin Area Plan. So the, the ordinance itself that we're talking about today does not include that area.
So everything from the ridge to Tahoe is under something else?
Just the Tahoe Basin portion, if it's-
Right. And with respect to Tahoe Basin, the same rule applies, unfortunately, that once the state law came down and said that if your local ordinance is not in compliance with the state law, is therefore null and void in its entirety, did apply to the Tahoe Basin implementing regulations with respect to secondary units. However, again, that doesn't apply to TRPA, and TRPA has its own rules and regulations regarding secondary units that are still in place. And the way we're bridging this gap is recognizing that TRPA has its, its own permitting authority that is not, has not changed due to state law. They were formed by a state compact, and I do agree with, their council has a point that they're not subject to this particular state law, or any state law frankly. And so they will continue with their permitting authority. And what we're doing on our side is working with them for this interim period until we're done with our litigation, and then moving forward with whatever amendments we, we determine to be necessary to comply with state law and to be in coordination with TRPA and the area plan implement, implementing regulations after we're done with litigation.
Yeah, there's so many other things that get, come into effect at Tahoe with the coverage issue, the unit counts, the spur footage, landscaping, all these things that you just take for granted here we can't do. And so I think that's kind of why they separated the sheep and the goats, so to speak. And we've talked about it. I bring it up almost every meeting. But, because there is a crucial need for more housing, low-cost housing. It's just, it's just incredible. I get, I must get beat up on it eight times a day, no matter where I go. Everybody's screaming and yelling for more affordable housing. And it, they kind of counteract each other sometimes, and so it's, it's difficult. And I think it's going to take some time to find a, a way through this morass because there's obviously a lot of people don't want any more people at Lake Tahoe. And there's a lot of people that want to go there and work and live and provide waitresses or services basin-wide. And so we're, we're just knocking heads right now, and we got to find a solution for it. I'm not too sure what it is, but we're aware of it and we're talking about it anyway. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, is the county getting inundated with a lot of requests for second dwelling?
So we checked back to about two thousand and three, which we felt we had some good reliable building permit data. And it's on average, it's about fifteen to sixteen permits per year, with one to two of those being in the Tahoe Basin, or I should say on the, the eastern side. This year, we've seen to date sixteen permits.
It's going to go way up pretty quick.
Let me see, one more question. So there is reference in the staff report to guest houses, and we're talking about secondary dwellings.
These are permanent living dwellings, yeah.
Yeah, so just for information, what's the distinction between guest houses and secondary dwellings?
I'm, generally speaking, and I would have to go back into the, the county code. Usually, it's, it's the determination of like a full bathroom and a full kitchen, a place where you could permanently live with full facilities. So a guest house generally either has a kitchenette or something smaller, wet bar, may or may not have a full bathroom, those types of things. So it's, the, the second unit is where somebody could reasonably live permanently, either by rent or- Can I, can I chime in? A guest house cannot have a kitchen. That's the difference between a guest house and a secondary unit.
Okay. And I was noticing that the guest house really falls into the same section that a garage or a workshop as far as the permitting process. Okay. That answers it. Thank you. I just wanted to get the information out there so people understood the distinction. Okay. Thank you. Okay, well, opening up to public comment, and now we are talking about houses.
Now she's the one to come up.
Okay, round two. Let me try again. I'll, I'll just cut to the chase here. I'm just wondering if, even though the state is requiring ministerial approval for these things, whether we can, whether we can add a provision that owners of adjacent properties be notified when a permit request has been filed so they have an opportunity to comment before the permit's approved in case there's site issues over their property or runoff or something else like that.
I think that takes away the ministerial nature of-
Okay. So go ahead, staff, and answer the question.
Okay. So two aspects to this. First of all, we already had amendments that came before this commission that made them ministerial. This ordinance proposes the same. State law was very specific that this be a ministerial process, and a ministerial process by nature is not one that has notification requirements nor appeal rights for other parties other than the permit, permittee going forward. We are bound by state law. There's really very little we can do with respect to this.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, is there any more public comment? Let me see, how did I guess?
Thank you. Mike Arabedian, I did have a chance to go to the MAC, Rural Lincoln MAC on Monday, and there was not a handout there or something, but I did find, and look at the material last night for your agenda. The, the statute that you're responding to, I'm going to read the, the first two sentence of it, sentences of it, which points out that the, this ordinance, this ordinance shall designate areas within the jurisdiction, the local, of the local agency where accessory dwelling units may be permitted. And then this next point is, really has to do with everything I want to talk about here, or much of it. The designation of areas may be based on criteria that may include but are not limited to the adequacy of water and sewer services, impact of accessory dwelling units on traffic flow, and public safety. I, I think public safety is the key issue here. It sounds like the county has full authority in the zoning to decide where- It sounds like the county has full authority in the zoning to decide where secondary dwelling units should be located. And this factor of public safety, as we've raised before on secondary homes, brings first of all to mind the extreme, the highest fire severity zones, and the question of how or if we should be permitting secondary dwelling units to be added to homes in the highest fire severity zones, the very high, the high moderate fire severity zones. We have seen issues of this problem in moderate areas, in Auburn, on the rim of the canyon, but we've seen a great deal on the rim of the canyon and the Forest Hill Divide. So, we feel it's your job and the staff's job to look at what can be done on, to, for instance, we may not want to encourage a twenty-unit subdivision out in the woods, an old one, we may not want, may not want to encourage them, or some even discourage having a secondary home there where there might be several grandmothers and grandfathers in that neighborhood and the kids are gone during the day or something. How are we going to manage that, you know, when there's a fire company, company is something our fire units will have to handle and so forth? So, a specific question, this is a concern, I hope that the county will address, but a specific question, as staff mentioned, this does require, or require, allow for, and not clear with the word is to use, how does this accommodate fire, the fire hazard? You had a, staff has a phrase that you described about dealing with fire hazard, and how is that accommodated in the ordinance?
Let me see, first of all, you're making reference to someplace in the staff report? Or was it, could you let us know what page that was on?
Well, I'm reading from the statute that require, that allowed this to happen, where the state took over this process.
Okay, so this isn't something we have in our staff report, Dan?
I don't know that, I don't know that it is. It's, the staff report mentions the code in question.
I just forgot this, because you want me to go back?
The staff report mentions the code section, but yeah, what I read is from the state law, it's the first section, well, the second section subsection of the state law that is the reason we're here today.
Okay, so, sounds like a reasonable question, particularly if the county does have some flexibility on it. So, we'll discuss that, I guess, when we get into our discussion period.
Would you like me to address that now? We're happy to address that.
And then specifically, what is, because it does, the staff mentioned that there is accommodation of fire issues, I don't remember the exact phrase, you know, what is being done for that?
Let me, first of all, for those of the commissioners who haven't met him yet, this is Michael Prefont, he's with our office, he's one of the deputies. He has delved into excruciating detail on the state law, which is why he's sitting next to me to back me up on the details. But let me address the first issue of the designation of areas. The county has had designation in the zoning tables, and specifically, it would be Section We have designations in that zoning table as to where accessory, secondary dwellings are permitted. What was changed last year was to bring it in alignment with state law and the ministerial. So, and you will see the final tweaks in the ordinance today that changed from the ARP, which is Administrative Review Permit, to the Zoning Code Compliance, which is the ministerial checking the list. So, the process of determining what zones are applicable has already occurred. So, the process of determining whether they are applicable in a zone and what setbacks might apply to that dwelling which stay in place and are in a separate area of the zoning code, that still applies. What state law changed was we can no longer require a permit for a secondary dwelling to go through any kind of discretionary review process. So, that's what's changed. So, the way staff's position is that we've already gone through that process, we've determined where these would apply, what the setbacks are required, et cetera. Michael can speak to the public safety. I would point out, though, that even when you get a building permit, fire is required to sign off. So, there's not one building permit I know of in this county that doesn't go through the check process of the various departments double-checking that you have your adequate sewer, water, and fire issues. So, that's built into a building permit process.
So, and I'll just, I'll address the fire. That came up with the units that are proposed within an existing structure, be it the primary or an accessory structure. If the unit is entirely within an existing structure, then, and still, and the setbacks meet minimum fire code, then it has to be allowed without any restrictions. The intent of this change in the state law was to address construction or buildings that maybe were legal non-conforming, built maybe prior to a more current zoning code that has new setbacks set for it. But it still must meet at least the minimum fire standards.
The other thing I'd point out, too, what is difficult, and admittedly difficult for the public is the government code section 65852.2 has existed for a long time. And what happens is the legislature continues to tweak with that, but they tweak within sections of it. So, if you look at it in its entirety, it would be appropriate for, for example, a jurisdiction that has absolutely no regulations for secondary dwellings, they would be starting with a what zoning category should it fall under. We're already beyond that, and what we're looking at is simply complying with what the legislature has now changed in that ordinance. So, it's a little confusing when you look at the ordinance all in itself, and what staff has done in the staff report is to show where are the areas that caused our ordinance to become null and void, and what are we proposing to bring it into compliance and to tailor it for the county.
Okay, well, I think I understand that. Are we square? Basically, I think what I'm hearing is, there's still a building permit required, and one of the check-offs in the building permit would be the local fire department. And so, if the local fire department determines that the building is being built in an unsafe area, then they would have the leverage to not sign off on the building permit and force it into a safer place. At least, that's what I'm hearing, is that correct?
No, not exactly, but the fire department has to sign off, so the fire department will dictate if, where they require, I'm kind of at a loss of what they require. They're going to give a list of what's required for them to sign off, so it's not, they'll say, no, you can't have it here, or what they'll say is, you need X, Y, and Z in order for the fire department to sign off.
Okay, so they'll have to meet the fire department's view of safety? Okay.
And I think that's the language in the statute about sufficient for fire safety, rear yard setbacks, but I don't know what that means. Apparently, that might be interpreted later, I'm not sure. I don't know if that, I just don't know what that means.
So, one thing I would add, the zoning clearance still requires when they come in for a building permit, that they have to meet the development standards for that zone district, just like accessory structure, just like a single-family residence. So, your setbacks, your building items like that, it's the same review that they're required to go through.
Okay, all I can say is it's covered in the building permit.
I can't say that I've got it, but, so, the other thing that's important here, while the ordinance does address architectural, and it looks like it'd be part of the review process, a major concern to the Sierra Club, and I'm speaking for the Sierra Club, but also Friends of the North for it, has to do with the impact on community character. And so, it also sounds like the question of secondary, or new dwelling, secondary dwellings, now they're called, though I guess they're dual in the statute, or in your regs, is one that can be addressed in terms of where they're permitted. It seems that's, so the fire to us is an issue, and also how these units address community character. In other words, feel that the architectural requirements that are there are not enough. And two of the, two of the secondary home permits we've looked at, which required variances, the homes where, one was located, got a variance to locate near a property line, so it's basically in the face of the neighbor, and another one got a variance from the closeness to a pond, which is basically on the street and not on the three-acre property. They're doing, you know, doing the best to not affect the view on their own property, but maximum effect on the community. And in the case next to the road, an anonymous neighbor did raise concerns, which they won't be able to do any, well, I guess if there's a variance, they could. So, we really hope that there's, that, again, in assigning where the areas where zoning permits them, we hope there's a mechanism to address impact on community character. Maybe there isn't, but if there's a possibility for that, we hope you will do that.
Let me respond to that. First of all, let's go back to 1706-050, that is our zoning code table that identifies the zones an accessory dwelling may be allowed in. As has been stated before, an accessory dwelling still has to meet the setback requirements within the zoning code. If an accessory dwelling doesn't meet the setbacks and the applicant chooses not to revise the design to meet the setbacks, that applicant can apply for a variance. A variance is a discretionary, discretionary project that would go before either the zoning administrator or this planning commission to be considered, it would be duly noticed for the neighbors. So, it's important to distinguish that a secondary dwelling still has to meet development standards. If it doesn't, it goes for discretionary hearing on that particular issue, so in terms of setback, not whether the secondary dwelling can be allowed in the zone, that's predetermined by our zoning tables. Second, within the ordinance that staffs presented to you today, under subsection D4, there is a requirement in the development standards that the secondary dwelling be subordinate to the primary single-family dwelling, as well as architecturally compatible with the primary dwelling, et cetera, et cetera. Therefore, built in with the review that staff would do, part of the issue is with the permit, that would be one of the items that would be looked at.
Thank you. So, the, looking at the staff report, well, you've also talked about the owner occupancy issue, which we think is existing and should not be changed, there's no reason to change that, that we can see. Then on page, it's really the bottom of page four, there are two sentences that are not clear. It's item four, zoning text amendment, page four or five, second to the last line. "The county shall explore the possibility of streamlining the approval process for second units, as well as allowing second units on smaller parcels than is currently allowed." Actually, it's just one sentence with two issues. I don't know, does that, I don't know, I'm wondering what that refers to, what that's talking about.
You're saying page four?
Yeah, page four or five of the staff, last page of the staff report, the last line, actually, above the signature.
These are just the findings that you would be making as part of your recommendation or formerly of the board's approval, there's, and we had a slide on it as well, these are the policies in the general plan, where there's a support for the proposed amendments that are before you.
It's not something to be done in the future?
No, sorry, so that the county's general plan, housing element, has an implementation program, and one of those implementations, policies and implementations of the housing element is for the county to explore ways to reduce or streamline the development of second units in support of affordable housing. And so, as part of the planning commission's recommendation and the board's final approval, findings are made, and so, the findings are being rested with those sections of the housing element, is really what that's being stated.
Okay, well, the last phrase...
Is the question dealing with the word, what the word streamlining means?
No, the question, it says, "The county shall explore," I don't know, I still don't understand it, but that's all right. You know, apparently, it's not something planned for the future, it's a part of a finding made on this.
Now, what Shauna is saying is that what we've presented and what we're required to do for any zoning text amendment is to show how it's consistent with our goals and implementation measures of the general plan, and as Shauna's saying, this happens to be one of the implementation programs for affordable housing, is to find ways to streamline. And by bringing our secondary dwelling unit into alignment with state law where it's required to have, basically be processed approved within the 120 days, that kind of streamlining is consistent with this implementation program. So, what we're saying is this proposed zoning ordinance amendment is consistent with that particular implementation plan in our housing element, to streamline the process.
Okay, and then the last, the phrase about smaller parcels than is currently also is an issue on page 11 of the text, exhibit A, page 11. As I understand it and saw last year, the minimum lot size for secondary homes was changed from 10,000 square feet to 5,000 square feet. So, the language on page 11 of the text, that, basically, the overview from our point of view is, I think, the broadest way to look at it, if a subdivision has ten units in it, because of this ordinance, it will have the potential of 20, 20 units. Now, obviously, that's kind of a speculation about what might or might not happen, but the language on exhibit A, number 11, page 11, where it talks about application contents, and B2, "Applications for secondary dwellings on vacant parcels shall include elevations and floor plans, both for the primary and secondary dwellings." So, our concern is what this might mean for a brand-new subdivision that's being in the approval process, if anything. I guess that would be the first question about that, because as we've seen on existing parcels, such as one that we appealed to the board of supervisors from, and so forth, there was a 26-acre parcel where five was, a secondary home was built, and then it was subdivided. So, now, as council indicated, both of those lots are also now potential for secondary homes on them. So, there's this possibility, as the division goes on, it just keeps, they keep multiplying, which is a concern of ours. So, the question is, you know, does this language in B1, "On vacant parcels," apply to, you know, is that...
If I were to have a parcel that had enough clearance for, to put two homes on it, and didn't have any homes now, I would have to have the elevations and everything for both because, or else...
The planning department and building department wouldn't understand or couldn't evaluate it. So, that's all that says, is if I have a vacant parcel, and actually, it's big enough to put two houses on it that meet the requirements, all it's saying is that I'd have to bring the elevations and plans, whatever, in at the same time. But if I brought one in, I could build my primary house, and if I still have enough area, I could come later on, I still would have to comply because it says the architecture and whatever, that what it says there would have to comply. So, I don't understand the question, actually, or the concern on that item.
Well, the concern may be that the legislature overlooked the fact when they say, second, there can only be one secondary home, that they could keep multiplying through...
Well, that, division of land is, can come before this commission and board of supervisors any time, and it's the devaluation that is made at that time on whatever the criteria is and what the concerns are.
Yes, we've had this discussion before.
Well, we have land in Roseville that they just, out in Plastra County Vineyard, Plastra Vineyard, that they've put in 500 units on, so, that they just divided. Small lot, we were, one of them, two of them were here before this commission, so, I don't know what the concern is.
Well, we've learned today that if that has CCNRs, it might prevent secondary homes on those, but then it also, those five...
We're not trying to prevent them, we're supposed to comply with state law, I guess, you know, like in Roseville, okay, I live on a street that doesn't have an alley, I can't, it would be impossible for, and I have a quarter acre, impossible because I built an addition to my house that basically blocks getting to the backyard, I mean, I still have my side yard setback, but the houses across the street have an alley, and they're quarter acres, it's in the old part of Roseville. If they want to, they could, they have access from the alley if they meet the setback requirements, they could put secondary home. Certain parcels, you can put them on by restrictions, and other ones, you can't, like mine, I can't, unless I tore down half of my house to get to the backyard.
Yes, I know, we would have a tough time coming to... Yes, I know we would have a tough time coming to the staff or to you to urge that secondary dwellings shouldn't be located, say, on a particular part of a development. But because CCNR can do that, we will certainly talk to a developer about that and say, here's some other things to consider. But, but, so-
You know, I think you're conjecturing on a lot of possibilities kind of in one statement.
Yes.
Maybe the way I'm reading it, because, you know, when somebody wants to subdivide their land, there's, depends on the nature of their proposed subdivision and the existing zoning, there's, there's different processes that they may have to follow, right? And so all those are a little bit different than this process, where this process is ministerial, mainly, I guess, if you have one parcel that would meet the needs and the criteria for a secondary home, then you have a way to do it. But in terms of future subdivision of these parcels, you know, I guess, my impression is that, you know, that it gets into a different area than just the ministerial establishing of a second residence.
Well, and this may not, then, it's not clear whether, this may not apply.
But the, the ordinance that's allowed a secondary dwelling unit on property has been around for how many years? Long time?
Sorry, I think it's about 20, 25 years.
Okay, so that, this is, this is a condition that's existed for the last 20 years.
Yes, and there have been real problems.
And, and, well, from the number of, of applications for permits for secondary dwelling units, I would say it hasn't been a huge issue.
Well, let me, let me clarify. The Sierra Club, you know, we are in support of affordable housing and low and moderate income families being able to buy, much less rent, in this county. And for instance, our advocacy for the State Route 65 corridor to be a transit, a region transit corridor includes affordable housing, an essential element. But let's go back a page, another, back a page-
Did we answer that, I think?
Oh, please.
No, I mean, did we answer your question? You know-
Well, no, but it may, there may not be an answer.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Let me ask council a question. When we get an issue, such as the one he's brought up, and they conflict with the CCNRs that were produced at the time the subdivision was created, who has, last say, the state of California or do the CCNRs that predate the new state law at state effect?
Well, CCNRs are, are private property restrictions. I probably didn't turn to Shauna because I'm not sure what they do at the counter. But what I can tell you is that if somebody comes in for a secondary dwelling, it behooves them to be double checking if they have CCNRs as to whether they can allow it. We're not going to stand in the place and say, mm, no, you can't allow it because your CCNRs don't, because we don't enforce those. Those aren't enforced by the HOA. Maybe talk to Shauna about the data.
Thank Karen actually address that. So, you know, CCNRs are just private restrictions put on by the HOA. It's, it's an agreement by buying into those properties that, that you've, that you're making if you don't allow-
The point he's making is where they've had concerns that they don't want more secondary dwelling units in a specific area because it's unsightly or whatever their rationale is. The CCNRs then would take effect and they can go to court outside the county process and get satisfaction for that. Is that correct?
We see that all over the place. I mean, you'll see subdivisions where we would, would allow, for example, farm-type animals, and the CCNRs will turn around and say, mm, no, not uncommon to see.
Okay. I think we're square again.
Okay, a couple more points. On the, on the previous page of the, page 10 of the text, I just have some difficulty understanding this. I know that the, the law mandates a minimum 1,200 square foot with various definitions, size of the secondary dwelling, or accessory dwelling. And this chart had applied to garages, and now it applies to all accessory structures. And I think, I'm not sure if the right-side column includes the 1,200 square feet. And also, when it gets up to the 4.6 acres without restriction, apparently that doesn't reply to, apply to the secondary home. But I just hope for some clarification.
Well, you know, remember, I asked a question about guesthouses?
Yeah, yes.
And when I asked that question, this was a chart I was looking at.
Oh.
And so what we heard was the distinction is like a guesthouse doesn't have a kitchen. And so if they wanted to build a guesthouse, this is what the chart would allow, but that wouldn't be a secondary dwelling. This would be a garage, a shop, a guesthouse, whatever, an accessory structure on the property.
So may I, I might want to just jump in and clarify here. So this is a section of the code, as I mentioned in the presentation, that the 1,200 square feet or a maximum of 1,200 square feet, be it internal and that 50% of the existing living area or external, the law allows for up to 1,200 square feet. However, the county local regulations as it relates to setbacks, height limits, and lot coverage still apply. So if you, if you were looking to build a second unit, whether a garage, a second unit, a guesthouse, pool house, whatever you want to do, you would still have to be in, within the setbacks and within the lot coverage area. So this section does include 12, the, the second unit.
Oh, it does?
It does, yeah.
But it doesn't permit going above 1,200 square feet?
No, no, maximum is 1,200 square feet.
Okay.
So the first, the first line, less than one acre, 12, 2,000 square feet, means that if there was an 800 square foot, obviously low-income home, presumably, there could be a 1,200 square foot structure. I mean, that's, the 1,200 is part of each of these figures on the right.
Yes, correct. As to the table, if you had an 800 square foot second unit, you would still have 1,200 square feet of other space, other, other structures you could have, garages or those types.
I mean, someone could look at that and think, oh, I can have a larger, they don't read the text. It would, it, that's just the point. I think we now know what it means. So when it comes to density calculations, I won't ask for that now. Maybe have a chance to meet with staff to understand how density is calculated under this, because the, the secondary dwelling units can't exceed the density requirements. And if that's okay, we'll meet and talk about that sometime.
Commissioners, regarding the density issue, the state law says that the ordinance shall do all of the following, provide that secondary dwellings do not exceed the allowable density for the lot upon which the, the secondary dwelling is located, and that they are a residential use that is consistent with the existing general plan and zoning designation. So the state law is directing essentially that we regard these secondary dwellings as already consistent with the existing general plan. It doesn't say we are obligated to amend the general plan because this is adding density. It says we're supposed to regard these as existing, as consistent with the existing general plan, because, precisely because they're trying to make sure that we don't shut down the ability to put them in place by arguing, oh, well, you know, this may be residential zoning, but this is going to increase the density beyond what's allowed. They're, they're trying to, you know, essentially make sure that, that counties and cities are allowing these to happen and don't have the ability to say, oh, but the existing general plan density doesn't allow for it. So that's, that's, you know, we do not have to look at the, the general, the density allowed in the existing general plan. We have to basically say that these are consistent with that.
Okay. Oh, I misunderstood that. Thanks very much. Yeah. Because, and I'm coming to a close here. You know, part of this discussion we're having is to try to understand what authority you have and what mistakes the legislature has made. We certainly, it may be evident from what we're saying-
They made a lot of them. I can answer that one.
Well, we, we think the legislature has made some mistakes, especially for rural areas and for high-fire hazard areas and other areas we, we want to protect. I will point out that the legislature is already busy amending this section, and perhaps you've read it to see if, what you're doing is, I hope you've read it to be, to see if it's consistent, because there are two bills, two assembly bills on assembly, third reading right now, I guess they could pass any time, to again amend this. And I think it's critical to, and there's a senate bill that is still, maybe still on the senate floor anyway. Yeah, that's Assembly 1515 and Assembly 678, and the senate bill, I think it's 167. Anyway, they are pending, and I hope, you know, if they require some changes, I hope that you would be able to consider that before it goes to the board of supervisors.
Okay, well, you know, I can almost guarantee that we'll be inviting you back for that.
Oh, so you may not vote on this today, which would be good from our point of view, so we could come back.
Maybe I can clarify that. We're constantly trying to keep up with, with the legislation in all areas of plan, use law, and sequel law, obviously. This one is a constantly moving target. I can guarantee you that not only our office, but planning staff is, is keeping up to date with it. Unfortunately, if we were to delay, it would be akin to saying, I lost my driver's license, so I'm going to drive without it for the next year because I'm not sure how, you know, the driver's license test might shake out. Right now, we don't have an ordinance. We have state law, which I, I think is not palatable from the standpoint of the county wanting too fashion it to, to meet the county's needs. So that's why this is coming forward now. We are going to recommend that you, you provide some kind of recommendation to the board and bring it up, realizing that we may be back in another six months to tweak it if we have to. But I think I speak for staff that we need to move forward, have something in place.
Okay.
Well, I guess I would conclude by pointing out the obvious. The legislature is over-tweaking with this, and we really, I think, need to do the maximum we can to distinguish what we need to do here with the suggestions we've made. Hope you'll consider them.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? Seeing none?
I would just offer up, I know we're in the middle of the item here, but I would offer up to, to Mr. Garabedian and even the public, you know, staff reports are posted a week ahead of time, the Thursday, you know, before the hearing. You know, and a lot of the questions that you brought up are really clarification questions. And, you know, those are things staff would be happy to sit down with you prior to the hearing, to see if we can answer your questions. So when, you know, we do get before the setting that, you know, we can focus on, you know, concerns and issues that, you know, you don't have your answers to. So I would just offer that up to you or any member of the public.
Yeah, I appreciate you doing that, EJ. I think that would be very valuable to the commission and also to staff, because some of Mr. Garabedian's questions might also bring up issues that staff can address before we get together, so that when they're making their presentation, they can maybe amplify on some issues that have come up. So I would encourage you to meet with staff in the future. It would be helpful to them as well as yourself in getting things clarified.
Okay. Thank you. Well, with that, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Chairman-
Any discussion or-
I'd like to have the discussion about maybe including in our recommendation the, the deletion of the owner occupancy requirement.
Okay. Well-
Didn't know how the other commissioners feel on including that.
Yeah, let's open it up to discussion. He's talking about deletion of the owner occupancy requirement.
We have a memo here.
And there's a memo that we've received from Contractors Association of Truckee Tahoe.
And Jeff, your argument, and I'm trying to understand, is that effectively by having that owner occupancy requirement, you're actually limiting the potential for additional affordable housing because it's a lessening of the marketplace? Is that the thrust of-
That is, that is a big part of it.
What, what else, if I might ask?
Well, I just, it's a property owner's decision to make it a rental or not unless it's precluded from the CCNRs. I don't think it's a regulation the county needs to impose on a property owner.
Fair enough. Okay, any further discussion on that particular item?
Well, I think it's, it's probably, in most of the county, it's probably okay. But I think at the lake where we get so much tourists coming and going and the owners renting and these, there's so many agencies out there now renting houses to just anybody that wants to come, it's, it's a little different situation because they're bringing in people that aren't familiar with snow removal requirements in the wintertime and they're, and they're-
My understanding is this doesn't apply up there.
Well, it does in Truckee area.
Not in the-
Probably not so much in the Tahoe area, but it, it, it does in the Truckee area, North Star, all that area is still affected by it. And, and the unfortunate thing is that so many of those developments are little townhouses that were not equipped with extra land or parking or the things they need to accommodate more units. And I have to be candid with you, the people that are doing that are not just a husband and wife coming up for the weekend. They show up with four or five cars, kids, snowmobiles, boats, the whole rig and roll, and there's just not room for them. And the streets, I got a phone call from somebody the other day in Lake Forest, the street was absolutely block tight because the guy's putting on weddings four, five, six, eight times a year at his home. And that's, of course, a different issue, but it, it shoulders onto it in the same way that people are just taking advantage of the situation and, and the rest of the people are suffering for it. And it's going to create a huge fire danger at some point or health hazard for emergency services, fire. And so I, usually I agree with you wholeheartedly, but on this one, I think there's, there's times where it would be okay, but other times it's, it's just not suitable.
Now, just to clarify, this ordinance does not apply to the Tahoe basin?
I understood that, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I guess, I guess one question I have-
North Star, Truckee, Squaw Valley, Alphainetos.
That is correct. It would apply to those.
All those high-snow areas.
And that's, that's where I would have a question is, you know, in Sheridan, I don't think there's much of a problem.
No kidding.
Or even the vineyards area. But when you get up in the areas where recreation is important, you know, there's some people that would, you know, put two, two houses on their property and rent them out all the time, just for the economic benefit. And then the rest of the residents in that neighborhood would have to suffer from it. So the question that comes up is what are the controls, you know? What are the controls? And this represents control in that area.
If I, if I could ask legal, when I read the, when I read the owner occupancy part, maybe I read it wrong, I did not, I did not consider short-term vacation rental when I read it, because we were talking about housing in this document. Did I misunderstand that? It seems to me you could still have a second unit and rent out the primary on, for vacations and stuff. It's not covered by this.
Right. You could still rent out the primary dwelling. That is not addressed by this ordinance. But it is useful to know, commissioners, that the ordinance would prohibit short-term rentals of the secondary dwelling. So in other words, even if you removed the owner occupancy requirement, you still would not be able to rent out the secondary dwelling for less than 30 days. However, this ordinance does not address the primary dwelling because it's focused on secondary dwellings. That would have to be dealt with totally separately.
That was the way I read it. That was the way I read it.
Okay, is there any further discussion on that particular item? Seems like we need to get a read from the commission on that item alone before we talk about the overall ordinance.
Why, I would suggest, let's, let's take the first recommendation and move through that, and then we can work on the second one.
Okay. Okay.
Number one.
Yeah. So I'm looking for a motion on the first item up there?
On the sequel issue.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the board of supervisors that they find the proposed zoning text amendment to be statutorily exempt under SEQUA guidelines, section 15282H, supported by the findings contained in the staff report.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Call for a roll call.
I have Mr. Moss with the first and Mr. Sevison with the second. So, Mr. Arcuri?
Yes.
Mr. Haber?
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, second item. And so this talks about the proposed ordinance and repeal the existing one and replacing it with the new ordinance.
Right. Now, let me clarify, the, the provision we are discussing is contained within the 1756-200. So the commission has a couple of options here. If the commission would like to take a straw vote as to whether you're proposing to recommend to the board to amend- as to whether you're proposing to recommend to the board to amend the replacement 1756-200 to delete the owner occupied requirement, you could either take that in your motion or you can take that as a straw vote ahead of time, whichever the commission finds easiest.
By straw vote, you mean?
To take a suggestion to either delete that or retain that, or a commissioner can simply make a motion to either take the recommendation of staff as proposed, which would include the owner occupied, or make a motion that would recommend deletion of that. You could make that as a motion and not deal with the straw vote. It's really whatever you think is the most expedient.
I'll just give you my opinion. I'd rather leave it in as staff proposed.
Yeah, I'm supporting staff.
I'm also supporting the staff recommendation.
I am as well.
It looks like we would have a majority.
And I'll make a motion that we adopt an ordinance to amend Placer County Code, Chapter 17, Sections, all those 17 sections relating secondary dwellings set forth in Attachment 1. And subject to the, what, the findings, what's the rest of this? Subject to the, well, zoning tax amendments, it's 1 through 4.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Since we have not been in compliance for the last eight months, we, nothing has happened on this. I mean, when somebody comes in and makes a request, we've not been able to help them. I think you mentioned there has been 16 requests this year, and that's kind of been on hold until we put something in place?
No, they defaulted to the state minimum requirements, so they were able to approve secondary, yeah, they just, correct.
Those went forward, so.
Yep, they still went forward.
Oh, okay, all right. Because I thought if we were working underneath our existing program, that's null and void, how do we do that? Thank you. I just wanted clarification.
Yeah, I guess we're okay then to go for a roll call.
I have a first with Mr. Rokuchi and a second with Mr. Arcuri. So Mr. Arcuri?
Yes.
Mr. Haber?
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so this will be going to the Board of Supervisors to look at finalizing it. Okay, and I see we have one more item on our agenda. Would you like to take five minutes, folks? We have information update.
Whatever.
I don't see anybody jumping up.
I thought we were going to get out of here early today.
Sorry about that. You can hit the chairman with the stick afterwards or something.
I thought we were giving spankings.
Okay, so we have informational update, and this has to do with the county's capital improvement program and associated traffic mitigation fee program. And we have Stephanie.
Good morning, Just Sparley. Good morning. Stephanie Holloway, Senior Engineer with the Transportation Department of Public Works and Facilities. We are excited.
And this is a non-decision item, just information?
This is an informational item only, yeah. We have, you know, kind of been before your commission in a number of, you know, different project settings to talk about traffic and the capital improvement program. And so we just felt like it would be beneficial to bring it all together here for you today and kind of break it down. So EJ has graciously let us come to present it to you. So before I start, though, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce you to a couple of our transportation staff team. They're not new to me, but they are probably new to you. And I just kind of wanted to introduce them to you. They're going to be working on a number of different development projects for our transportation public works team, so I wanted to introduce you to them. Maybe I'll ask them to stand up. Nick Cappuccino is, has been instrumental to us in implementing the Placer Vineyards project as it moves through its implementation phase. And Rebecca Solomon, she is kind of instrumental in the Tahoe area as of recently. She's coming up to speed on our new area plan. She's going to be working with the Tahoe team up there to implement land use in that area. So thanks, guys. Okay, so I'll try to move through this quickly so you guys can get to lunch. But to kind of just start at the beginning, the beginning of our capital improvement program and traffic mitigation fee program starts with AB 1600. This is an assembly bill that was passed by the state legislature back in 87 where it allows for us to collect development impact fees associated with land use. And one focus that we are coming to today to talk about is the traffic infrastructure and mitigation fee program. So after 86, the county did actually go through and do an extensive nexus analysis in 95. That was the, kind of the start of our current fee program. That analysis did cover future capacity needs in the terms of level of service. That is currently our metric to identifying transportation infrastructure. And because you guys didn't get a packet, you know, please feel free to stop me if you have questions along the way. The other thing I did look at in the nexus analysis was sort of the need for this critical safety, you know, bridge upgrades, roadway widening. So that's all part of that nexus analysis. And the capital improvement program and the traffic mitigation fee program really are focused on, you know, providing that infrastructure capacity to accommodate traffic associated with future land, land development, land use. So again, in April of 1996, the board adopted our countywide traffic mitigation fee program. Again, to, new development is subject to the traffic impact or traffic mitigation fees as they process. And these fees, again, are meant to fund necessary transportation infrastructure to meet future needs and our level of service standards. The program does break up the county into 11 fee districts, anywhere from the Tahoe region, Forest Hill, all the way into the western Placer County. These are areas outside of the cities. You can see the city is hatched out there. A number of cities are hatched out there. So the countywide program, we're going to talk about some other programs that have come into play since that time. But the initial program did break the county into 11 fee districts. So the districts are more or less, in some areas, you know, sort of focused around the community plan area. You can see Granite Bay there. That district is along community plan lines. But the improvements that are identified in each one of the capital improvement programs do facilitate the land use that's identified in those plans. Where the general plan applies, you can see Placer Central, Placer West. Projects that are in those programs are infrastructure that was identified as part of the general plan. Clarify that. Just to go back, so each, each different district does have a separate CIP, Capital Improvement Program list. There was a question as we updated the Tahoe district just recently as to, you know, the projects that are in that program, the funds that are collected, do they stay within that district? And so that was kind of a critical piece for the public to know, that the fees do stay within the district. So just to kind of go through our capital improvement program structure, again, the CIP is really meant to identify projects to facilitate that future infrastructure and identify the funding mechanisms that we project will, will help pay for those. I'll give you kind of a chart. You're probably familiar with the chart. But the four funding programs that are identified as part of the CIP are frontage improvements. As part of our street improvement ordinance, land development projects, as you know, are required to build their frontage improvements. That's typically construction of a lane and a shoulder along the property frontage. The nexus analysis did talk about existing deficiencies. So back in 1995, when we did our nexus analysis, there was a determination about any existing deficiencies. Obviously, new growth development would not be responsible for those existing deficiencies that were identified at that time. The other state category is going to be funds that we either had in a previous fee program that we've brought forward. Redevelopment funds sometimes go into this category, as well as our state partners, state and federal partners when we have programs that are affected in other jurisdictions. And then last but not least, the county traffic mitigation fee program. So the projects that are on this list really are, as they're identified and if they're funded by traffic mitigation fee program, those are the only projects that those dollars that we collect on development that can be applied to implementation of infrastructure projects. So here's an example of our Auburn Bowman CIP. As you can see on the left, there's a number of different roadways that are identified, as well as moving to the right, the area and the description of the project and the overall cost. Moving more towards the right, you can see those funding sources, the frontage improvements, existing deficiencies, other state. And last but not least, the county traffic impact fee program. So these are the dollars here, let me get this to work, on the right side that make up, that sum up to be our traffic mitigation fee.
Yeah, let me ask a question. You know, particularly in the Tahoe area and even down in here, some of the roads up there are state highways. But, you know, a lot of the complaint is they're really not accommodating the current situation. And so I think you had state in there. So like Highway 49 or Highway 89, the developers would, through the CIP program, be required in those cases to contribute?
In most cases, they would be required to contribute because if you think about it, you know, there is background traffic on that state facility. But the growth in the traffic is really more of a function of the adjacent land use. And so a lot of times when we have projects like on Highway 49, 89, 267 with the state, there is an element that is developer funded, but the state does have a contribution to those projects as well. And so you'll see in those instances, here's a good example, Auburn Ravine, which is here in the Auburn area, I-80 overcrossing. You can see the overall project, we've estimated at about 3 million. About half comes from the state and half comes from the developer funded portion.
How many, that's just Auburn Bowman, what, how many are on the total list approximately?
How many, how many?
Projects.
CIP? Oh, you know, it varies depending on the CIP.
Right now, just since we don't have the list in front of us or look, just what is there, 100, 200?
Let me estimate that for you. I would say within Auburn, we've probably got, this is one sheet of the program. I think there's three sheets.
We have a lot of them.
Yeah, there's a lot, yeah. Yeah, but, but you know, in Placer West or Placer Central, there's probably three or four projects on that list. So it just really depends on the district and the amount of growth that's anticipated in that district.
Traffic impacts play a very big part of our decision process. And understanding what your department is looking at to try to offset some of these impacts would be really helpful, like your, all the lists in the various areas. So that might be something, just a suggestion from my perspective, might be helpful if the commission had some of the lists, the things that you're looking at, and maybe how much has been funded so far. Because I don't see any, you know, timeframes for any of these things because I guess it just kind of depends on funding as to when these may happen. But it would be helpful, again, to see this list for the various areas.
Yeah, I'd be happy to provide you with the whole CIP. It is available online as well for each of the different districts. But just to kind of elaborate on that a little bit, so keep in mind that this list is really a 20-year projection of the need. These fees are collected over the life of the plan. And so although we don't prioritize, the program does allow the board to prioritize. We really, you know, as the traffic grows slowly, it's pretty, it becomes pretty apparent on, you know, where the need is. And as the fees are available, then we implement a project. So theoretically, at the end of the plan life, as that development has occurred, this, the fees have been collected and the infrastructure would have been built.
Well, we know that there, as referenced, the highways, 49, 87, 267, are under a great deal of stress already in particular areas. And what we can do to try to alleviate that, because as we look at projects, we're just exacerbating the problem if we're not, if there isn't a solution that's going to be forthcoming to resolve it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And we're in constant conversation with Caltrans on those specific roadways, you know, related to the capacity as well as related to safety improvements. So we're in constant kind of conversation as to where are the funds and what's the right project and when, so.
Let me see, let me see if my understanding is correct here.
Sure.
So these, the money starts rolling in when the project starts getting developed, right?
Correct.
And so each little piece of the project is contributing, so you don't have the full chunk of money until the project's complete. Is that correct?
We don't have a full chunk of money for the overall program. But as, as that money comes in, say, let's take a development, for example, the one over here that's developing in Auburn Timberline, they have a portion, a mitigation to the overall cumulative traffic. We'll talk about cumulative traffic. That's the 20-year traffic. That's the, their piece of basically this pie, right? And so as we get those funds, you know, their traffic impact fee dollars may fund a signal, a road widening. And so we're requiring them to build those where applicable. We do give them, you know, fee credit against that obligation. But as those fees come in, they can be applied, you know, to projects in increments essentially.
And so, so you would require them to put in a stoplight before you really have, before they've really started the development then?
You know, if, I would say if there's an existing plus project need for them to install, say, a traffic signal at Bell and Richardson, we would, we would require that as mitigation of the project. It is overall cumulative mitigation for the plan, and so they, they would be credited against their traffic impact fee obligation. Correct, yeah. So although there's a construction trigger, there's an immediate need for that as part of mitigation, they do get credit against what they would pay in their traffic impact fees because it's in our program.
Okay.
Question, if I remember correctly, from time on Fire Board net, there was a time limit in which money collected needed to be spent. Are you under those same restrictions?
I don't believe there's a time limit on spending the money. There is, there, we do have a requirement that we go through and identify every five years that the projects that are on the list are still applicable. But as far as the money being sent, I don't, I don't know of any time limit on that. Any other questions? I'll keep going. All right, so just to talk about how the CIP relates to traffic impact fees, and we've kind of already touched on this, but the general plan EIR, community plan EIRs, and the specific plan EIRs do identify the overall need for infrastructure improvements. And they identify mitigation measures that we then build into our, our capital improvement programs for the area. Again, our metric right now is level of service, as you've all heard. There's, if some of you are aware, there's some discussion about us moving to a different metric, VMT or vehicle miles traveled. And so that's going to be a hurdle that we are going to be tackling in the next couple of years. And so you'll hear a lot more about LOS and VMT, I think, in the next coming years. So just kind of give you a brief example, and I apologize, we can't probably read this chart, but it's, it's the other chart that we were looking at, just copied in. So again, the traffic mitigation fee program, this portion of our CIP chart summed up the overall, you know, obligation of the program to build these infrastructure improvements, is divided by the available or remaining units, remaining land use, you know, in the, in the CIP area. We do take into account, you know, any fund balance that we have on projects that we've collected and just do basically a straight calculation of the overall price divided by the overall units remaining. And you can see here, there's an example. Our Tahoe CIP was about 25 million, just recently updated by our board. The remaining units in that Tahoe area were 4,630. So we have a DU, dollar per DUE, we're going to talk about this DUE here in a minute, of just roughly 5,400.
And those DUEs, is that by the plan or is that by actual permitted?
These, these numbers come out of our planning department. So these are land use projections out of our planning department based on consistency.
So like in the, in the Tahoe area, we've heard that, you know, they have so many units that are approved in the, like in the community plan. And so that's where you'd come up with the DUEs?
Yeah, and there are remaining units. So there's a number of units that may have already built and paid the fees. So we do divide that by the remaining units available for the plan.
So it hasn't been approved yet?
Yes. Yes. Uh, the CIP is adjusted annually by our board. Because it's the board, you guys don't typically see that, and that was kind of the intent to bring this forward to you so you had the information. We do use industry standard, the engineering news record reports a monthly construction cost index increase. Our program is based on an April-to-April inflationary adjustment. We do also look at the CIP periodically, and we're currently working on a update to the circulation element of the Granite Bay Community Plan. An update to that CIP will follow. Similar situation came out of the Tahoe Basin Area Plan. Once the area plan was approved, we did take an update to the CIP, to our board, to accommodate that infrastructure need. And so, whoops, wrong button. So you can see, we also do adjust it for land use projects. We do periodically get requests from, you know, projects that develop in the area that maybe have a, a larger need than was identified in the plan twenty years ago or fifteen years ago. So they will come to us and say, you know, there's, there's a project that maybe needs to be in there, and so we'll do analysis and take that before the board. Didn't happen very often, but it does come up periodically. So here's just an example for you, again, we're working in kind of the Auburn area for consistency. This is Bell Road. This project has been in our CIP since it's, since ninety-six. And you can see, we have in light item here, Bell Road from I-80 to Highway forty-nine, widened to four lanes. Some of you may recall this roadway was a two-lane roadway back in, let's date myself, two thousand, I think, or two thousand and four. We did widen the road to four lanes instead of this now. This was the funding, the main funding mechanism for that roadway widening. So just to kind of give you a real-life example there. Did I say six, not four?
You know, just a question, you know, like each of the project comes in and, and you're analyzing the impacts of the project and determining what the fees are going to be for the project. And then it comes time, you know, the money gets collected because the project rolls. But then, at the ti, the county's got the money. And so, I guess, how do you determine the priorities that that money's going to be spent on? Is that still tied into the project or is it tied into some priority of the county?
Well, again, the only thing that would really be tied to the project is if in the environmental document, there was a determination that there was a plus project impact. So either it's, you know, the roadway or intersection is operating at unacceptable levels today, project adds traffic and it gets worse, that would be a plus project impact. Or it goes from okay to bad with the project. That would require the, the project to, to build the infrastructure, to build the mitigation. Hopefully, we've captured it in the fee program and they would be eligible for fee credit.
Well, they've paid the fees.
Yep. So if we've identified there's not a plus project need, it's more of a cumulative need, then that's where the, the fee collection comes into, into play. And there's, like I said, no, no prioritization of projects, because really, you know, we, we can't predict where those projects are going to come in, where the need's going to arise in the list. But we have a pretty good idea as we, you know, as traffic.
But I guess my question is, county's got the money at that time, so it's county's money, it's not the developer's money anymore.
Right.
And so, do they still target that money for the, the area that was identified in the environmental document? Or do you target the money for the most need in the area?
Yeah, so the, the money that was collected as part of the, the document, as you're talking about, really goes into that fee district. So the, the project is in a fee district, the fee district has a cumulative need for traffic. So we, we collect the money, and as the need arises in the district, the county would then go and build the infrastructure, our design department would undertake a project to implement. The Bell Road was a, a perfect example of that, where there was a need identified. This, this project was built with traffic mitigation fees through the Department of Public Works, not developer. Did I answer your question?
Well, I guess, maybe I have trouble expressing it, but yeah, the county gets money from the developer when the project's done. And then the county is looking at the cumulative problems within the district. And so, you know, you have a chunk of money here, and I suspect that the county's going to spend that money on the highest priority.
Oh, absolutely.
Projects within the district that may not be directly related to the project that actually paid the money.
Oh, I see, yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, that's what I was kind of assuming.
Okay. Yeah, the project itself would mitigate its impacts, and then the fees would be collected for the overall cumulative need, and, and that would arise over time.
Okay. Yeah, you had a question?
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
Yesterday, we approved a tree-cutting permit for Caltrans on the California highways in the Tahoe Basin for emergency tree-cutting, because there's so many dead trees, and I guess a tree fell and killed a lady on Highway eighty-nine and so forth. And so they're going to put in a big crash program to remove the dead and dying trees on the, in and near the Cal, the highways. Is the county looking at doing anything like that on their roadways where they exist? I don't know whether they've given it any thought or not.
You know, I don't know that I have an answer to that.
I got you.
But I can look into it, yeah, no, I mean, I think, I think there's obviously a vulnerability that, that the county is going through, maybe Karen can chime in.
I don't know a lot about it, but there is, we have a tree mortality task force. And it's my understanding they are looking at ways in which that the county will remove the dead trees within our county right-ofways, there are grant, there's grant funding through the state to hopefully reimburse us for that effort. That's unfortunately about what I know. It's, it's a big problem, they meet on a regular basis, I wish I could provide you.
Yeah, I would, I would mention here that a few weeks ago, we approved a horizontal grinder for Rio Bravo, and that was in relationship to a state program. And the intent of that grinder was to have a grinder that could grind logs. And they were going to refocus their activities on, on the logs from several counties, and these would be in relationship to roads that, and, and I hope they get to it soon, because pond rose of pine doesn't stand very long.
No, that, that is in fact related, and we even have on a, on a look, there was a, a site in Newcastle that also was approved for storing the trees that are coming down, a lot of them out of the, the federal lands up in the Tahoe area, but that is all interconnected.
Well, it may be possible if, if you find out you've got a problem and you want to get involved, it, it helps in a lot of ways, because we might be able to joint venture with the power companies, because they're also vulnerable with their power lines that run in our county right-ofways. And I also might be able to get a little money out of the conservancy if we have to, so.
Okay. I will pass it on to Kevin Tabor.
I'm guessing that there is a representative from Public Works that sits on that more tree mortality group?
I would, I would guess, yes.
You get jumped all the time.
Because I would be curious if, if there's a tree that's just outside of the right-ofway of, for county roads, but obviously it's at risk of coming down on the county road if they are, you know, working with property owners to remove those trees so that they're not a hazard to the county.
I believe they are. In fact, I read an article just recently about that.
They are. They're looking into right-of-entry. Obviously, we can't do it without having an agreement with the property owner, but part of the discussion of the task force is creating template right-of, right-of, um, right-of-entry agreements in order to go in and do just that, is remove the trees.
And a property owner, of course, would want that to happen, because otherwise they'll pay for it themselves, or they would have liability, so.
Yeah, I know PG&E has a similar effort going on with, you know, going, getting right-of-entry and going onto properties, so.
It's mostly sugar pine and fir right now, but it's still, there's a lot of trees.
Lower elevation is pond rose of pine.
No.
Yes.
There, well, there are sugar pines.
Most of it in the Tahoe Basin is sugar pine.
Yeah, I'm talking lower elevation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry.
Pond rose of pine. Usually, sugar pine is going to last a little longer than the pond rose pines and fir's. Now we're getting into forestry. So we'll let you go.
Not my forte.
It's a cousin bug, it's a different bug.
Cousin bug, well, yeah. They got different bugs, all of them.
So just to give you a little recap on the history of the programs, again, eighty-seven is our date for the AB sixteen-hundred fees. At that time, the county did identify a number of, you know, critical roadway needs and developed just about a handful of traffic programs that we called our traffic limitation fee programs. Some of you may have heard that term before, it is still referenced in our county code here and there. But, but basically, that was the old, the old fee program, the old CIP. Ninety-six, that fee program did get adjusted into eleven districts within our county-wide program. There are four other sort of fee programs, developer fees, I just want to touch briefly, I don't want to get too far in the weeds on them, but Sparta, the South Placer Regional Transportation Authority, does have a fee program for regional roadways, that's our Sparta fee program. And we are joint venture with a number of the cities in the area, as well as PCTPA on that, excuse me. And the main focus of that is to, to fund improvements to Sierra College Boulevard and sort of these cross-jurisdictional needs to pay, based on development within cities, as well as within the county. The Highway sixty-five JPA program, you'll hear about that, that does fund improvements, did help build most of the interchangeages on the Highway sixty-five corridor. That's a joint venture with the cities of Rockland and Roseville, and there's a, there's a separate board for that, that JPA as well. It did also build our Sunset interchange with those, those fee dollars. The city-county fee program, that's a joint agreement that we have with the city of Roseville to fund improvements to Baseline Road, as well as the Willerka Road Bridge. And that fee program has been around for about ten years or so with this, with the city. That is a, an agreement with the city. And then lastly, you've heard about Tier Two, probably most recently, Placer Parkway is the main contribution of those fees. This is a developer fee, it only applies to the growth areas of the county, however.
What's the estimated cost of Placer Parkway?
That's a good question.
A whole bunch.
Yeah, millions. I think somewhere upwards.
I heard somewhere north of three-hundred million.
Yes, I think that sounds about right, yeah. So this is just a chart to kind of show you the, what I call the bowl of spaghetti. The, all the fee programs, all of the fee districts and each of their identified fees, these programs all sum up into what the developer sees in their overall traffic mitigation fee program. So the countywide program that we've talked extensively about, the sixty-five JPA, the Sparta city-county fee program, you're seeing zeros here, because some of these programs don't apply. In Auburn Bowman, the sixty-five JPA doesn't apply, as well as Sparta and the city-county fee. So those, that's where those zeros come. This is just a culmination of, you know, the bottom line here that the developers pay for all the fee programs. Just a few terms of the trade I thought I would throw in for informational purposes.
Placer East was, Placer East was the cheapest.
Placer East, yes, yes, that, that fee program, like I said, it has about three projects in it. So level of service, you've heard a lot about that term. Basically, a level of service A is a free-flow type of traffic, level of service F is obviously congestion at its worst. The PM peak hour, you've probably heard us talk a little bit about that, those are the highest consecutive fifteen-minute periods. So when we measure traffic, we measure them in fifteen-minute increments. The PM peak hour is, is the culmination of those consecutive four fifteen-minute periods. Could be anything from four to five, could be four fifteen to five fifteen. So the PM peak hour and, and related, the AM peak hour, those, those are the, the method of calculating what that peak hour is. The trip length is really measured in miles, and this would be, you know, depending on the land use, the trip length can vary. For a residential unit, can be different from the trip associated with a shopping center trip, just really all depends on the land use and the percent new, just to explain that a little bit. This is traffic that is not necessarily generated by the land use. So the example that I have is if your, your trip is really generated from home, your land use is home, and you're on your way to work, you may stop by the bank, or you may stop by and grab a coffee, or you may stop by and do something on your way. Those, those types of land use have a very high pass-by rate, so they're not new trips on the network. And so they get a little bit different consideration, they get a little bit different discount, because the trip's already on the network, it's more of a deviation of trip associated with it. So that's what the percent new is, if you've ever heard that term before.
How do you capture this information?
So, so the, yeah, good question, great question, I guess.
Well, and all of these, like, you know, highest for consecutive every fifteen minutes, how do you do that?
Right, so the, the PM peak hour and the AM peak hour, really, we can put tube counters down and just straight count traffic, that, that one's an easy one.
But how, the difference between a truck and a car, you know, you're going to have more wheels running over that thing, so how do you just sort of?
They're, they're smart counters.
I guess by golly.
Yeah, no, actually, they do pick up axles, different axles and different.
They're that sensitive, they can tell the difference?
Absolutely, yeah, we can get different modes out of them. Yeah, and, and sometimes we use cameras, we can count via camera as well.
Well, that sounds like fun.
Yeah. The trip length, the percent new, those really come out of kind of our industry standard. You've heard us talk about the ITE manual. Really what that is, is sort of a culmination of a lot of studies nationwide that tells us, you know, for this type of land use, the average trip length is X, the average peak hour is this. And so really, those, those, whoops, did it again. Those two factors are really coming out of sort of this industry standard, the ITE manual. And some, some land uses have a lot of data points, so we really say, hey, this is, this is a really good indication. Some land uses just don't have the historical data. And in those cases, we really do encourage the developer to, you know, find something similar and go count it.
Yeah, because if you've got a, let's say, an age-restricted community versus an area where you've got lots of families, you're going to have a lot of different uses of vehicles in those particular communities, so how do you, how do you use just a general standard?
Well, between the, between the single family and the age-restricted, there is a different trip rate, different percent new, different, that all comes out of the, the ITE manual. So there, there's a multitude of different land use categories that are in the ITE manual. I'll bring it so you can look at it.
And I want to report back next month, next meeting.
Next meeting, we're going to just meet right after.
So the vehicle miles traveled, you'll hear a lot about this, like I said, in the future, is really just that peak hour rate, those highest four consecutive fifteen-minute periods times the amount of, the amount of distance that that vehicle is on the network times, you know, how much of that is really a, a new generation or really just a pass-by, so times the percent new. That is VMT in its sense. It's, you know, how many vehicle miles traveled on the network is, are occurring. And that leads us to the dwelling unit equivalent, you've heard a lot about this as well. This is a normalization to the amount of trips generated by a land use in comparison to one single-family dwelling. So we try to normalize it to say, you know, everybody lives somewhere, this land use has either more or less than a single family would generate. And I did a little calculation here for you, already talked about the ITE manual. Down here on the bottom, you can see the, the single-family rate is one, that's that normalization. The office is about four times, or four DUEs more than a single family. A church would be obviously less than a single family, because we are looking at weekday, and this is kind of a critical thing, our program is set up for weekday PM peak hour. So I put church on here because, you know, historically, churches have been on the weekends. And so you can see, that's why that factor is really so low. Some churches will have, you know, staff on-site during the week, and really, that's where that traffic generation comes in. Although they're in intense, you know, at the time that the church is either in session or letting out, there can be an intense traffic generation during the week, during the weekday, in that peak hour, the generation is fairly low.
So mornings are not a problem?
For churches?
No, weekday.
Oh, I wouldn't say mornings are not a problem, a lot of times you'll see that the studies do look at AM and PM peak hour. Historically, it's been the PM peak hour, that's been really the, the difficult one. AM is starting to creep up there. Um, AM is starting to creep up there, um, and so typically, if it's a subdivision where there's a, a generation of traffic in the AM, like, single-family, um, we will ask them to also analyze the AM peak. If it's a land use, say, such as, um, try to come up with one off the top of my head, something that's more of a PM peak hour generator, like a commercial site, where maybe they're not open till noon, um, then we, we would typically not do like an AM analysis with that type of project.
The PMs are typically le- less staggered than the morning, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Basis of that.
Right.
Is that in the morning, people leave at different times to go to work, so to speak, but
Yep, yep.
...most offices is at peak time when they're closing and people are
Correct.
Right?
The other thing that affects the AM analysis, I'll point out, are schools. Um, the school peak does fall in that AM typically, uh, for drop-off. Now, for let-out, typically, those two, the school peak doesn't coincide with that commute peak. Um, so when, when we have a school nearby, we will be kind of sensitive to what is really that AM picture, uh, for the community.
I think we need to consider all the open space zone for church. We could get a big mitigation.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow that.
Huh?
Well, I didn't follow that. Open space?
Yeah, all the open space we
Oh, for traffic
For churches, now we can mitigate all our traffic problems.
Churches will like you.
Or parking.
Pray for you, too.
You oppose us to the TRPA.
We don't have any churches at Tahoe. They're all
Gambler, you heathen.
So just in closing, um, you know, the program is really based on a lot of, uh, data and survey and engineering judgment. Um, the one thing I did want to kind of hit on this, um, you know, the, the dollar amounts that are in our program are our best guess, um, estimate on what we think a project which may develop in 20 years could cost. Uh, we're constantly, you know, keeping up with, uh, inflation through the CCI, um, but it really is sort of a, a planning, um, level estimate in our CIP. And, um, we do encourage, like I said, for those land uses that don't have a lot of data points in that man, in the ITE manual to point to, that they, we're really open to, you know, site-specific situations and traffic, knowing that, you know, not, not one-size-fits-all, and, uh, you know, we are open to that. Um, you know, the collection of fees, uh, and the building of those improvements are really, you know, critical to implement, um, the general plan, the community plans in that area, um, and support our long-range planning efforts, so. With that, if you have any questions?
There's a church on the right over there. Or a big house.
Yeah.
Look at the traffic in front of the church.
Just, just for your information, yesterday, at the end of TRPA, we had a gentleman's discussion about what we were going to do about traffic, I-80, et cetera. And I brought up the discussion of the train, getting the train to become one of the prime movers. Uh, again, we've been kind of turned down by the railroads. They don't want to even talk about passenger service. But the state guys, all the guys we have on the TRPA that represent the state, they think they can maybe bring pressure to, to, uh, the railroad to reconsider that position. And, and then we could run passenger trains, and then maybe it would mean re- recycling so that they ran all their freight at odd hours and then had a schedule of passenger trains that would help mitigate I-80 traffic between the Bay Area and ski areas and Reno and so forth. And, uh, that would probably have a terminus and truckie area and then an additional bus service from there to wherever.
You know, I rode the, uh, I rode the train last week from Roosevelt to San Francisco, and I did it about two years ago. Two years ago, that was maybe 20% full. Last week, it was packed.
Is that right?
Is it the same time of year?
Same time of year, yep, everything. It was packed.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
It's, well, anyway, we're going to keep trying, that may be
I'd love
...helpful to the I-80 corridor problem all the way across the state, because it seems to be just getting worse and worse and worse. I don't know where they're all going, but they should stay home.
Wonderful.
Anyway, it's just an informational thing, but I, I was happy to hear them, you know, the governor's appointee and the senate appointee, you know, stand up and say they were going to start talking about, put pressure on. We didn't have a big enough gun, I guess.
I hope this has been helpful.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that. Oh, we have a public comment here. Mr. Garbedian.
Uh, Mike Garbedian, two questions, one general and one specific to a project. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, I was reviewing the SECOG, uh, I think it's called the SB-375 list, and I'm just wondering the relationship of that list to the list we saw, if there is a relationship.
I think you're going to have to go to a technical person to answer that question.
Yeah.
We got a bunch of dumb guys up here.
So I, I can't speak to 375. I believe that is the, uh, air quality law. Um, I think you, maybe you're talking about Senate Bill 743? No? Okay. So, so if it is 743, Senate
375 is, I think, but
I think 375 is the air quality bill. Um, no, okay. Uh, if it's 37, 3743, that is the bill that was approved to change our sequa metric from level of service to VMT. Um, like I said, we're going to have a lot of discussions about that. That final rulemaking is not complete yet, and so we really don't know, uh, haven't developed that standard. Um, but there, you know, the, the premise behind VMT is really moving into these alternative modes, ped, bike, transit, um, trying to get people out of their cars and into, you know, cleaner, more sustainable, um, modes on our environment. So, um, there, you know, we anticipate that there will be, um, you know, a shift in our, our current CIP and our current fee program with that legislation. What that looks like, we really just don't know at this point, uh, because the legislation, legislation isn't finalized yet.
Okay, thank you.
Second question.
One more question.
Right. Um, the, uh, the board, and the CIP, I don't know if it's the same one you're talking about, but it must be. The CIP, last week, the board had allocated over two years, $20 million to Placer Parkway, and earlier had allocated six, earlier this year, I guess, $6 million for Phase One of Placer Parkway. All of that for Placer Parkway. I just wonder how that fits in to the, you know, how is that being paid for with partners and fees and so forth?
I don't see it mentioned that.
Yeah, go ahead if you have an answer.
Yeah, I'm looking at Karen, because I'm not, I'm not familiar with that. Um, I think the CIP that you're referring to is our capital improvement program. Um, the overall capital improvement program.
That's exactly right.
Involved in that, but, um, but I believe the board did approve some funding towards, uh, towards Parkway as well.
Yeah, it's a different C, different CIP program, um, and it dealt with, with things like, you know, what, what buildings might we put as a priority in terms of constructing on, say, the government center. It did include the Placer Parkway. Uh, the Placer Parkway funding, um, is a combination of, uh, it's run by a JPA. Uh, there are what's referred to, and what Stephanie had on our chart, as the Tier Two fees.